I called our Commissioners a meeting to order for December the 21st. Our invocation this morning is Commissioner Chris Gurley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've asked the senior pastor at First PH, Bill Rhodes, to come and give our prayer this morning. Bill's a very good friend of mine, got a lot in common. Both of us were adopted, both of us married up in life. Both of us married to educators, and both of us got a lot of children. So he's a good man, we're blessed to have him in our community. So Bill, if you would.
Thank you for what you do to serve our community and county and the good people of Wayne County. Let's just pray together. Father, we thank you in this Christmas season because you're a giver, and you're generous, and you love us, and we feel that deeply this season. And Father, I thank you for the generosity of these men and women that give their time, their life, their talents, their abilities to serve the good people of Wayne County. And Father, I just pray this day and all that will be done, give them wisdom, and we pray, Lord, the insight to help us with these recurring struggles that they battle with every month. But to know that you're our hope and you're our solution, and this is what we're reminded of this week in our lives, is that we place our hope in one who reigns and rules over us all, and has a generous heart, and wants to give us. And Lord, you'll know that you'll give today what we need, and we thank you for that. I pray grace and blessing over all of our county, all of our employees, all of their families, and this meeting this morning in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Commissioner Williams.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for December the 7th. You got a motion on the floor? Is any discussion on the motion? Being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed? Okay, adjustments of the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning. We would like to remove unfinished business from our, number one, under unfinished business. At this time, the DSS Board is still receiving some information and is not ready for a recommendation. We hope to have that for our next meeting. Also, under consent agenda, we would like to remove the first, number four, motion to approve the sale of surplus property located at 412 East Walnut Street, Goldsboro. We need some additional information from the city about that. And we would like to add, under new business, a number two, an update on OSHA testing requirements for COVID-19.
Okay. With that in mind, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the adjusted agenda. All right, we got a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed? Okay, now we've got special presentations. Mr. County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First is a recognition of Wayne County Finance Department's GFOA certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. I'll turn that over to Allison, but I do want to thank Finance for everything that they do, the support that they give all departments, the support they give management, the support they give this board, and for 25 years is a heck of an achievement. So I'll turn it to Allison.
Thank you. This is an award program that's presented by the National Government Finance Officers Association, and so we apply for it every year once our annual financial report is completed, and there are certain criteria that has to be met, and they have CPAs and professionals that review that and then make a recommendation to award that. We have a legacy of great financial reporting. It was started by my predecessor Pam Holt and continued on by a great staff, and I wanted to just ask them to stand because I can't do this by myself. I am very blessed to have a wonderful staff, and they just, we're a team is what we are, and I'm just so grateful for them, and it doesn't get done without all of them. So I wanted to stand and recognize them as well. We're working on the next one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, number two, under special presentations, is GIS mapping presentation by our GIS director, Julio Garino.
Mr. Chairman, good morning. Thank you for giving me this time. Just want to start off a little bit talking about GIS, but mostly we'd like to talk about my predecessors. Now, I'm not talking about the guys that replaced, I'm talking folks that have been dead for about 300 years, like Ortelius, Columbus, Ptolemy. These gentlemen were able to create maps using whatever instruments they had at the time and whatever medium they had at the time. And as you can tell by these maps, they were not accurate at all, not even by a long shot, but they only had the tools that they had at the time. After Mr. Columbus did his famous trip back in the late 1400s, maps got a little bit more accurate. As you can see from this map, we're starting to see a little bit of the coastline of the United States, or America in this case. You can also see since the late 1400s, it's also smack in the middle of the Renaissance period, a lot of the maps start to become not only accurate, but a lot more ornate. We can even see maps of the Americas with all their flourishes, all their ornamentation, and even a couple of sea monsters out in the sea. As we move further into the Renaissance period, we can really see how much ornamentation we have received or they have placed onto these maps in order to not only make them accurate, but also make them pretty. Fast forward into the 16th century of North Carolina, we can also see that that frame of mind has also come into play. The map that we see here in the forefront is the coastline, if you can recognize that, of the Outer Banks. We start to see that we have a scale map at the bottom. We're starting to see that there's a description of the top right-hand corner, and also who commissioned these maps in the top left-hand corner. By the crown, we can see its royalty, and by the shield, we can tell that it has been commissioned by the kings and queens of England and France. England being the Three Lions on the red background, France being the fleur-de-lis on the blue As you start getting further in time, accuracy starts to increase. We can tell this by the map of North Carolina, the map of Wayne County, or the map of Goldsboro. These 1800 maps are a lot more accurate than their predecessors and a lot less ornate, as you can tell. Now, a couple of gentlemen in the late 1800s, starting with the 1900s, a gentleman by the name of William Rand, and his newly arrived to the Americas, Mr. Andrew McNally, started to create, developed a process, they used wax transfer onto the maps, wax transfer printing. They started to create maps a lot more accurate than their predecessors. And a little-known magazine at the time by the name of National Geographic gone on the bandwagon as well and started to create maps of their own. Now, this 1933 map, you'll notice a couple of things. One, it is accurate. Two, no ornamentation. And three, we're missing Hawaii and Alaska. As we get into the GIS and the information superhighway, we start seeing that maps are a lot more accurate. We actually see what Wayne County looks like. As we move forward from the 1940s to the 1980s, DOT starts to develop maps of Wayne County, and then we progress into our current age where we can just download any map of the counties to show where the roads are, interstates, so on and so forth. Now, with the maps, with GIS, I should say, we can ask questions now. I bought a property for $60,000. Show me every single property that's, give or take, $10,000 within a one-mile radius. There we go. Show me the population densities of the Rosewood area, and oh, by the way, give me the names of the subdivisions and the mobile home parks within the area. Not a problem. We can transform a mundane, hard-to-read table into something that's a lot more presentable and a lot more understandable. However, I'm a romantic at heart. I miss the old maps. I miss how much ornamentation, how much flourishment, how much everything they had back in the day. Those are nice maps, in my opinion. So I believe everybody remembers this map. I wonder what it would look like 300 years ago. So, a couple of things you will notice from this map is the title, Wayne County, North Carolina. At the top, you see a coat of arms. That coat of arms is from the Wayne family. And I believe Mad Anthony Wayne is the one who we attribute the name of Wayne County. He was a revolutionary general, he was instrumental in helping win the war against Britain. Things you will notice, everybody's name is here, Ms. Acoch, Mr. Williams, Mr. Foster. Off to the left-hand side, that is y'all's coat of arms that has been researched and re-researched. So what you have there is your actual coat of arms. And just out of curiosity, let's see what the other districts would look like in the 1800s. Notice the spudding of Goldsboro has the O-U-H-G-H, excuse me.
Really, all you had to do was copy and paste.
And a little bit extra in there as well, sir. So with that being said, like I said, it's going to be a short presentation. Is this the end of it? Or is it? I have shown y'all what y'all's maps would look like if it were done back in the Renaissance period. Would you know how, you know how it would be to field one of these maps?
What a nice Christmas present.
Every single map that I presented printed on canvas.
Wow.
So if you don't mind, let me step forward and present y'all's, your maps.
Please do. Oh, great. There's another secret on the picture frame.
If I can get this straight through you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Merry Christmas.
Mr. Acoch, since you're at large, you get the entire county. Thank you so much. Ms. Acoch, you're the district.
Thank you.
And Mr. Foster, here's your contract. And I have an extra one. At the time, it was given to folks that managed the royalty or to manage the kingdom, or in this case, managed the county. So with that, folks, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners, I'd like to wish y'all a Merry Christmas from the GIS departments.
Mr. Chairman, may I say something?
Thank you, sir.
May I say something?
Sure, sure.
Julio, y'all, he kind of gave me a little insight on this a while back, and I was like, man, you know, people don't realize how blessed we are in Wayne County to have Julio. I mean, he is borderline genius. He is very, very articulate in what he does. He's assisted in a lot of stuff, I know with the sheriff on some things, and the county is just blessed to have him, and thank you. I really appreciate that. That shows you, not anybody and everybody can do what he did on this right here, and we're blessed to have him. I just want to tell you thank you for what you do for Wayne County. Did your research go far enough back to let you tell you which other county in the United States, Mad Anthony Wayne, is named after?
There were several, actually. There is Southern Ohio, Detroit, Oklahoma, there's, I think about maybe 12 that I found that General Wayne has the county's name attributed to him, yes.
Interesting.
So any folks, any questions for the GIS department?
Just keep it, keep going.
All right, folks, have a good day. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. All right, Mr. County Manager, the next special presentation.
The next one is a very nice announcement in Wayne County, announcement of community development block grant, the CDBG funds for neighborhood revitalization program for the Rollingwood Community in Dudley. Again, we did a press release on this last week, I think Commissioner Williams, there was an article in the paper where Commissioner Williams was interviewed. But I really do want to thank Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Gurley, Chip, and also our consultant, David Harris, for getting this grant done, but also pushing it forward. And also thanks to this board for pushing it forward as well. So I'll turn that over to Commissioner Williams if he would like.
Well, I just want to say, this is a team effort overall. I mean, it couldn't have gotten passed had we not had this commission supported. And having the staff, having, you know, our assistant manager, you know, pointers in the right direction, Mr. Harris for filing it, and also Ms. Deborah Graham who is here today who yelled out and let us know there was a need there. I mean, you can't do without citizens, staff, and this county commission. I mean, and my hope is that we could try to employ someone full-time because those are resources that the county could use all over. So if we can find a staff member that we can permanently hire to administrate the community block grant, we can do something throughout the county. The city does it quite often, but it doesn't reach the masses that the county has. So those are my hopes, I'm thankful. There's just more to come, you know, more to come. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, in regards to the appointment committee, my understanding is we have no recommendations. We removed unfinished business, now we go to consent agenda. We have removed the first item four. With that in mind, I'd entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So move.
All right, we have a motion. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the consent agenda signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed? And now we go to new business. Mr. County Manager.
Again, under new business, there is a motion to amend the Wayne County Board of Commissioners' rules and procedures, and that proposed change is on page 76 of your agenda.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to amend the Wayne County Board of Commissioners' rules and procedures.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Discussion? I'd like to know, when do we initially amend this prior to that, these procedures?
Let me refer to the county attorney on that.
Adam Clark, wasn't it in November?
September, the final was September of 2020.
2020. Okay, so the procedures, they were amended September 15th of 2020. At that particular time, was there a reason why we didn't add what we're doing now on page 76?
Adam Clark had requested number one on here because of some of the discussions that we have had at the 8 o'clock meeting that then you had to listen to again completely at the regular meeting that begins at 9:00. The second one was, there'd been questions about whether the presiding officer could determine the length of special presentations, and that question had not been raised before.
Okay. Well, the only, one of the concerns I have is that, you know, we're trying to approve those particular things, but I think we should look at the whole procedures. I think that would be the starting point, being that the procedures were amended before a lot of these other commissioners had gotten here. For instance, I wasn't here, I know Ms. Acoch wasn't here, Ms. Barbara Acoch, and Chris wasn't here. So I think, I think we should probably go over the whole procedure or table it until we all get a chance to really go over the whole procedure. Because there may be some things that we could possibly find that aren't appropriate in this, in these procedures. I know I looked at them and I saw some conflicts. So I would just ask that we maybe table it until our next meeting, and everybody has opportunities to kind of look it over.
So is that an enforceable motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor, and that is to table any action on the rules and procedure amendments.
Until the next meeting, Mr. Chair.
Until the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Will that give us enough time to do whatever studying that we're going to do?
Yeah, I think, I think that would definitely give us enough time to look over the procedures and see if there's some things that may be fine or may not be fine.
Just keep in mind, you got two holidays coming up before the next meeting.
We can table it.
Yes, right now we have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion on the motion to table?
Don't mind table it to the fourth or if some feel like we need to wait a little bit longer. I'm fine with that. I think in January, I think it's fine.
Well, for clarification, we're talking about tabling the action of these two items, but I'm not, so are we bringing that up at our next meeting? How long are we tabling them for?
Well, I just, I just heard Commissioner Acoch state that we have to, we have Christmas and we have New Years. So, I mean, I'm fine, we're waiting until after the holidays are over. I don't think it's something that's going to affect us from doing business.
Okay, any more discussion on the motion? There's no more discussion than all those in favor of tabling it until?
The second meeting in January.
The second meeting in January.
That's fine with me, sir.
Which will be? So you're amending your motion to the second?
Correct.
Which will be January 18th, correct? That's correct. All right, so all those in favor of tabling until the second meeting in January signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Okay, then we've got an update on OSHA.
Good morning again. This, this topic has been pending in federal court for some time. You've probably seen it in the news, and we haven't brought it to your attention yet just because there's been some pending litigation. So on November 5th, 2021, OSHA instituted some rules for employers with more than 100 employees. There were two options available, both of them relate to COVID-19 and certain precautions. One of them is a mandatory compulsory vaccination policy for all employees, and then the second option, if the employer chose not to do a mandatory vaccination policy, then they would, any unvaccinated employees would have to submit to weekly testing, so one test each week along with some face covering requirements. Once that rule was put into effect, there were immediate lawsuits filed in federal court, started in the Fifth Circuit. The Fifth Circuit entered an injunction preventing the rule from taking effect. There were lawsuits throughout the country, and the procedure when that happens, it's consolidated by lottery into one circuit, Court of Appeals. That went to the Sixth Circuit, and that's been pending for several weeks. We had, I personally had not anticipated a resolution of that before Christmas, but there were some back and forth, and they came back Friday and they overruled that injunction. So the Sixth Circuit has now said that the rule can take effect. As you can imagine, that rule, that ruling was appealed immediately to Supreme Court. However, I wanted to come forward and just give you some updates on where we stand. Obviously, the Supreme Court could overrule the Sixth Circuit and they could say that the rule can't take effect. Nonetheless, we have been preparing, staff has, anticipating that this will take effect. So we already have a policy drafted, we were just waiting on the litigation to play out. So the original deadline for this, for the testing, was January 4th, and we were to have a policy in place December 6th. Obviously, that couldn't happen because there was a stay in place, there was an injunction. So what OSHA has said now is they are delaying enforcement of this to the end of January for the normal provisions, and then to February for the testing provision. And they did this to try to give employers a little bit of time to comply. The wrinkle to this is North Carolina is not governed directly by OSHA. We have a state plan, I believe there's approximately two dozen or about 20-something states that have an agreement with OSHA where the state enforces its own rules. So that's the North Carolina Occupational Safety and Health Office. So they create regulations that cannot be less restrictive than OSHA. So the caveat to this is, when the rule went into place, North Carolina had to come up with these rules, but the injunction went in so quickly that they couldn't come up with any rules. So we know what OSHA is going to do, but that doesn't necessarily apply to North Carolina. So there's a lot of gray area here, there's a lot of uncertainty. So I do think we're going to have clarity by January 4th, by the next meeting, but I wanted to just give you a summary of what the option to, staff is recommending. But I wanted to just give you a summary of, of what the option to, staff is recommending, recommending option two to the board. Not a mandatory vaccination policy, but a vaccination policy that has a testing aspect. So under option two, and this will be presented in the full policy that we, we will bring to you, all employees must disclose vaccination status to HR, and HR has to keep that on file. There's a slew of rules that apply to that, they have to keep it on file, they have to keep it secure, and that'll all be laid out in the policy. Any employee who is not vaccinated would be required to submit to COVID- nineteen testing once every seven days. Now, a couple caveats to that, the rule does not state that we have to provide paid time off for that. I believe the way that we've drafted it now, since we are going to require that, we're going to work with the employees to give them paid time off. That'll be in the policy, and also, we're going to provide testing at cost to the county. The, the rule does not make us do that, but again, that's something that we're going to do because we, we have the vaccination site and the capabilities to do that.
Let me ask a question on that, or do you want to get through that?
You can go right here.
On the, on the vaccination part, is that going to be done, is that the rapid test, or is that the C, whatever, or whatever that thing is, the two-day test?
It's a full test. I'd have to go back and look at the rule. I'd have to double check on that.
How, how we're going to, if that's the case, if you've got to wait two days to get it back, how's that going to work?
I'd have to look at the rule to be completely sure. I believe that you can return to work as long as you're asymptomatic and you're waiting for the test. If you do not get that test back within seven days, you're not permitted to come to work, if that makes sense. So we have to have a negative test on record every seven days.
So would it be a rapid test or the two-day test?
I think it's the two-day test, but I'd have to verify.
So, so where are we going to, are we going to provide this at the Health Department?
Well, there's a lot of discussion about, you know, we haven't figured out that part yet and, and the cost because if we have, you know, seven hundred employees, you know, who are not, you know, I'm just throwing out a number, I'm just throwing out a number, how we would schedule all those employees to get tested on a weekly basis, to give them time off, there, there's a lot of different things that, that we've really got to look at, the type of tests, those type issues.
So who, who determines that? Does, did North Carolina?
Ginger just came up, I believe it's just any negative test, so it can be a rapid test, but we'll verify with that.
So that's something that we need to, that we're going to pretty much task the Health Department to do.
Well, and, and again, but we've also had the discussion that, that you're not required to give employees time off for the, the test.
I'm talking about the cost factor.
Well, the cost factor, that, the, the cost can be absorbed by the employees as well.
But what I'm saying is, is I would think, since we do it for the public, that we should do it for our employees.
That's the plan right now.
Okay, okay.
And we, ARP funds would cover that.
I've got some more questions as you get down to the.
While we've got a break there, I, I don't believe people quite understand the, the number of tests on a weekly basis. So every seven days, any employer that has a hundred or more employees in Wayne County are going to have to follow the, these guidelines. Now, that's a lot of folks, and that's a lot of tests, and that's a lot to put on our Health Department because that's the only one basically, to my knowledge, primarily giving out tests right now.
That and Goshen.
Well, the Goshen, there are a few, few, few others, but the overwhelming majority of them are through the Health Department. And that's, that's a major concern. It's easier to write these rules up, but implementing them are going to be some difficulties.
Well, that's going to have to be a coordinated effort, you know, if, I mean, between, I mean, everybody can't come on Monday.
Right.
You know, it's going to have to be spread out, and not just for the county employees, but spread out for, for the businesses in town that's going to have to, you know.
We only have some capacity.
Mr. Neil, what's appealing for not following those guidelines?
Fines, fines from, well, not OSHA for us, but the NC Occupational Safety and Health Office.
So there'll be fines?
There'll be fines. I, I will say, the, the language that I've seen from North Carolina and from OSHA is generally speaking, as long as employers are making a good faith effort to get policies in place and administer testing, I don't think they're going to be too draconian on those fines, those fines. But that said, if you completely ignore it, certainly you open yourself up for.
I, I think we need to, or our staff, excuse me, I think we need to reach out to the employer, the, the, the major employee, employers of our county and find out what they're going to, what they're going to expect. I mean, I've just, I foresee this being, I, I don't want us to have a cluster.
I think the biggest problem is going to end up being testing. It's going to be, because they're already running out of tests now.
Exactly.
So once you put that into effect, you're talking testing times ten. And you're not going to have enough testing, so I think that's going to be a problem in the future as well, real quick. I mean, as soon as they put in the guidelines, it's going to be a problem. So it's going to be a lot to deal with, and then if you force the vaccine, you have to worry about employees quick. And then you don't have staff, so it's going to, it's catching everybody up in a, in a, in a bad situation.
And, and the option we're looking at is not mandatory vaccination, it, it is the, the testing piece, you know? So we're, we're not considering any mandatory vaccinations.
And could we, because we have a lot of companies, and I mean, you know, and I know we're, we're, we have our Health Department, but are we going to be able to absorb all of that, or are we going to have to say at some point that we can't do? I don't know, what's the largest company in Wayne County?
Largest company?
Yeah.
I'd say probably Butterball, South Coos.
So are we going to be able to take those on as well, or are we going to have to say they're going to have to? They're going to have to privatize that with Goshen or one of the offices or something like that, too? So we're going to have to look into a lot of things coming up soon because, one, we're putting too much on our staff, it's going to be an issue, so.
Okay, we can go ahead and continue with some more good news.
The other, and I will say, with, this has been, on the county side, this has been a work in progress for several weeks. We knew it was coming, or we knew it was in the works, and the advice we got from everybody was, just act like it's going to be enforced and it's going to go into effect.
And I'm, I'm not throwing doors, Andrew, I'm just asking questions, I mean, I just.
No, I understand, I understand. So any non-vaccinated employees will be required to wear face coverings at work. There's a lot of conditions on that, there's a lot of exceptions, those will be laid out in the policy. You know, the usual exceptions about eating, if you're in your office, isolated, all those apply, and those will be laid out in the policy. The county must provide pay time off for employee, for any employee who wishes to get vaccinated. That includes the time to go get the shot and any side effects associated with that shot. I'm, I'm looking for some guidance for the North Carolina office on that. OSHA in their template has two days of, up to two days of pay time off. I don't know if North Carolina, that's not in the rule itself, so we'll be looking for some guidance on that when it comes out. And any employee who tests positive for COVID- nineteen shall not be permitted to return to work until ten, ten days have passed since symptoms first appeared and twenty-four hours have passed with no fever, without fever-reducing medication.
I've got a question about that. We, we're, um, and I'm not saying that we've got employees that would do this, but I'm just saying, we, we're opening ourselves up to a delay in providing service to county based on each, anytime they come up positive, they've got to stay out ten days. So how, how does that work for, is there time? I mean, is, is there a limit, is there a, you know, I mean, I, you know?
You all adopted a policy for the COVID pay time off for breakthrough cases. So vaccinated employees who can demonstrate that they're vaccinated and then they test positive. So that was a county benefit that you all voted on. For any employee who has to take time off, they would have to take their sick or vacation time, and if not, then it would be leave without pay. That's what we've traditionally been doing.
So if people are not vaccinated and they keep, they keep getting it, and, and, you know, we, we've had employees that's, that's had it, and they are vaccinated, I mean, I'm just, where, where's the? So tell me, tell me what the procedure is going to be on it, because I perceive this being an issue.
There, there hasn't been, it's just been a request for pay time off, or excuse me, leave without pay, and then it goes to the manager for approval.
Okay.
There, there hasn't been a limit or anything to that, it's just a case-by-case approval by the county manager.
And if you remember that, what we did pass, as Andrew said, you know, for the breakthrough cases, if you are vaccinated, the county will provide those ten days, so.
Yeah, I agree with that. But I'm just saying, I just, I just foresee us having a. I don't know.
Yes, sir.
I ain't much on people mandating we do anything.
Well, and did you say a hundred employees?
A hundred or more, more than a hundred employees.
If I got ninety-nine employees, I don't have to, but if you've got a hundred and one, you do.
Yes.
I mean, that's discrimination.
It's part of many, one small aspect of the litigation, is the number.
A person working at McDonald's will be exposed to a whole lot more people than a secretary at TA eleven. Or Butterball.
That's the truth.
I, I mean.
That's one of the main arguments that is being litigated right now, is why one hundred is chosen.
And right now, the appeal is before the Supreme Court to either.
So not the merits of the case, so they won't, they won't hear the merits. All they're going to rule on is that preliminary injunction that was issued.
Whether to reinstitute it or to allow it not to.
And if it's reinstituted, then it goes back to the trial court, they will have a trial, they will go through the litigation process. But in the meantime, the rule cannot take effect.
Okay, so when they run out of sick time? I mean, they take time without pay, I mean, how does that, I mean, is there, is there a point that? And I guess my, my issue is, is if it's repetitive, and, and you can get it for, for whatever reason, if it's repetitive stuff, is that going to be on a case-by-case basis?
It, it is, and if somebody can prove that they, they were positive for COVID, even though they don't have, you know, they're unvaccinated, they don't have any more sick time, we will ninety-nine point nine prob, give that leave without pay. You know, that, that we, you know, if they can prove to us, but if they, you know, it, it's like you said, it's keep repetitive and repetitive and repetitive, and hey, you know, then we would look at that.
As an employer, we have the right to request a copy of that positive test before approving leave without pay.
We should.
And we have been doing that.
So, so it's still on the table where a, another employee can give sick time to somebody else? But if something comes down from the federal government, that you would get that sick time back, does it go back to that person? There's paperwork that, go back to what, you're shaking your head, which person?
Once you give up, if I give my sick time to somebody, I, I've given it up, I've given it up.
And then say, just say, and I'm just throwing this out, it's just say the federal government says, we, we, we've got to give them two weeks. So that person that gave the sick time to the one, doesn't get that two weeks? And that's, that's the problem, that's a, that's.
The only time that it was two weeks was under the original.
I'm just throwing a number out.
Right, that was under the original CARES Act, which expired.
Okay.
I, I guess the, the point of that being, if, if I choose to voluntarily give my sick time to somebody, I just need to look at that as, as gone. Regardless of what they may or may, that person may or may not get.
Well, evidently, we'll, we're just got to waiting to hear from the Supreme Court.
And then the last aspect of this, it does not apply to boosters. The definition of fully vaccinated is two doses for Pfizer and Moderna, and then one dose for J and J. Does not apply to boosters at this time.
At this time.
So hopefully, we, we can have something back, a formal policy back to you by January fourth. A lot of things are still kind of up in the air, but I know, it's, it's been in the news, so we just wanted to get it out in front of you. We are working on it, we are addressing it, there's a policy ready to go. Just waiting on the feds and the state and the courts and everybody to tell us what we need to do.
So we don't need to act on anything until you get more information to us.
Correct.
Right.
Hopefully, January fourth.
I need to reiterate, I ain't throwing doors at you, I'm just asking, I just, I just got some questions about that, there's just, some things just don't quite.
And if you do have specific questions that you think about, you know, Tom, just email, let us know, we'll, we'll give those answers for you.
And one thing off the top of my head, we've heard conflicting information about Renshaw Deeds and the sheriff. Under federal law, they're considered county employees, under state law, the sheriff and the Renshaw Deeds are independent employers. So how is the state going to handle that, if that department has under a hundred? I've heard it either way, so we just, we just need more information. Once we have that, we'll get the policy in front of you.
Clear as mud. Have a good day.
Thank you, Andrew.
Okay, County Managers report.
Did want to remind you of a couple of things. Number one, I think was said earlier, Public Affairs will be filming the Commissioner holiday greetings immediately after the meeting on the third floor by Public Affairs.
On the fourth floor?
Fourth floor, excuse me. So want to remind everybody to do that. Also, to remember that in our first meeting in January, which is January fourth, is our first night meeting. So we do have our agenda meeting at four, and our regular meeting scheduled for five P M. And with that said, just wish everybody Merry Christmas, thank you.
Great. Board of Commissioner reports. Commissioner Williams.
Just want to wish everyone a happy holiday. Again, we're thankful to the staff, to the county commissioners, and to Ms. Deborah Graham for letting us know the need in Rolandwood. Happy holidays to you, thank you.
Commissioner Foster.
No comment.
Mr. Barbara Acoch.
Well, December has been a very busy month, I don't know how the rest of you are, but I've been very busy. I would like to thank everyone for putting the staff Christmas party together, it was good to see everybody out and having a good time, and I seen a few people doing a few dances that I didn't know they had the moves, but that was very interesting. I would like to thank the people who put together our Christmas parades we attended, that was fun. It was fun to see the children and the grown-up children enjoying themselves at the Christmas parade and being able to, to be out once again and having fun. I was honored to be a part of Pipeful Lodge Five Forty-One with Commissioner Wayne Acoch. We attended Saturday Atlanta to Reeves. One of the things that I noticed when I was there was seeing the young people attending this function also. It was good to see the young people appreciate the veterans who were buried at the Pipeful Cemetery. I understand there's over two hundred and thirty veterans at the Pipeful Cemetery, and I would thank Lodge Five Forty-One for putting that program together. It was very humbling, and to see the people, you know, realize, you know, what the sacrifice was made from our veterans. Had a great luncheon with the county manager at our Latin restaurant here on Center Street. The women's local, or LPG golf, are looking a place to have their tournament, and Goldsboro was one of the ones that they were looking at. I also was participated with Representative John Bell at the Pipeful Board of swearing in of their new board members and their older board members. And also for the Fremont Fire Department, I went over and swore in their officers also. So I want to thank them for inviting me to that, it was an honor to do the swearing in with these people who volunteered their time. And I'd also like to wish our staff Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I hope we have a better twenty twenty-two, and pray to our Heavenly Father that we can get beyond some of the problems that we're facing the last two year with COVID. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Hardest.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just like to remind everyone that on Christmas Eve, GWK is, is offering a ride free, so take advantage of it, do your last minute Christmas shopping. Also, I'd like to thank my, all the commissioners for inviting, allowing me to speak at their last meeting, where we discussed our Eastern North Carolina recovery and residency policies and the monies that are available. I'm telling everyone who's in, in town management, their funds are available, please apply for those grants because we can, we, as a county, need, but we need the efforts. We need, we need the efforts of everyone to get this money and get it, get our systems and so on and so forth in place. Also, I'd like to just wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, love one another, and be thankful. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Garland.
Yes, sir, I'd like to thank Carol for her gift, thank you, that was very thoughtful. Julio, for his, his gift of, of, of something that very few people are. Julio, for his, his gift of, something that very few people are qualified to do, we had a virtual DOT meeting, it's been a couple of weeks ago, maybe, week ago.
That week ago.
And we're, we've got some things coming to Wayne County, we're hoping, we're trying, we're trying to get the section, they call it the Princeton section, fast-forwarded on the 70, or I-42 section, also, we're going to try and fast-forward the Kenton bypass, try to push it at the forefront of the funding, we also have some repaving projects that are going to be done on the south end of 117 from Duplin County back to there at Acock Tractor, we're trying to, we think we have part of the railroad tracks addressed, and we're trying to address the one track that we're having issues with, so we've requested that they try and start on the Duplin County end, so to give us time to try to work through, to try to fix that issue, so it doesn't look like a patch job. We've had several calls from citizens of Wayne County that live in subdivisions that having issues with their streets, and I've told them, you know, basically, we don't, we don't take care of, the counties in Wayne County do not take care of road issues, that's the North Carolina DOT, but we're, every time they give us a issue, we try to address it, or at least give them some pointers on what they need to do. Last thing is, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and let's hope that, as Ms. Barbara said, 2022 is a better year, and hopefully, we can get some projects moving and make Wayne County proud, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And Mr. Wayne Acock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, several of the things, as already been mentioned, that I participated in, and a lot of other commissioners did, the Christmas parades, they went well, it was an honor for me to be the driver, be the driver for our mayor of Nuhana for the Goldberg Christmas Parade, that young man had an absolute ball, and it was, it was an honor just to, I was supposed to be part of the honorary for the parade, but I turned out just being the driver, so, and also, I participated in the senior luncheon at McCalls, had a lot turn out, and I think probably COVID was the reason for some of that. Also, I want to commend five of our fire departments, I think it was five, that went all the way to Rocky Mount to participate in the warehouse fire, it's not very often that we were asked to travel that far to work on a major fire, but I want to commend our, our fire department, did participate, and our fire marshal for coordinating, making it happen, because other counties would do the same for us, they have in the past. Also, as some of y'all know, I had a little episode the weekend, I want to commend our EMS department, I mean, they were Johnny on the spot, I mean, at the time my wife called, I mean, they were, they were there, Dr. Kinnigey showed up, Dave Cuddick back, our EMS director made things happen, not just because it was me, but they would do it for anybody, I just happened to be the victim this time, but I am okay, had a scare, but thank goodness it was not my heart, I'm just, not as young as I used to be, and I tried to do things, and I had just tore some muscles loose, but it scared me, and, but our EMS staff got me through it, and also, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, you know, we've had a couple of bad years, hope the future is better, but we're Wayne County strong, thank y'all.
Thank you.
One, I forgot one thing, about a week ago, I got a phone call one Friday night, one of the sheriffs finest, called me and reminded me after they had forgotten to lock the gate at my business, so, thank you, Sheriff.
Okay, I do want to applaud our finance department, I don't think Wayne County actually realized how lucky we are to have the finance department that we do have, and, I mean, 25 years of receiving this award, there are a lot of government entities, I'll call it that, that have got real issues in regards to their finance, and we're just blessed to have a great finance department. Julio did something that is just amazing to me, he found a coat of arms for Daughtry, I mean, and look, there's a deer in there, look at that, I mean, that's really interesting, great job. In regards to the development block grant, persistence pays off, when I first heard about this, and talking to folks, with the limited number of dollars, and we were asking for 750, your chances were really minimized, but it just goes to show you that by persistence and continuing, and actually filling out the application, it's a great job, great job, and we're just happy to see that that's coming there to Rolandwood. And I too want to wish everyone a very, very Merry Christmas, and evidently, there's, County Manager's got one thing that all of a sudden he remembered.
I put in the weekly update, we're looking at dates for the retreat, for the Board of Commissioners, our goal-setting retreat, trying to get with our legislative delegation, right now, I believe the date is going to be January 28th, which is a Friday, so.
So if you'll pencil that in on your calendar, we're looking at the 28th.
Right, it will be at the Maxwell Center, will be an all-day affair, but wanted, and I appreciate the clerk reminding me of that, but we kind of need to start getting that solid, so we can get some presentation from the school government, our delegation, hopefully some from our federal delegation as well, from Congressman Butterfield's office, and also our Senate office as well, so.
And that was one of my last comments, and that is, board members need to be reviewing some of the things you want to discuss at the retreat, and specifically, items that would either be affected by the state or on the national level, that we would request our elected representatives to address.
And theirs want to be there.
We are, we're hoping so, if not, someone representing their office will be there. This is kind of new this year, but we're asking those that we can ask above us to help Wayne County in certain areas, so we'd ask that you all be thinking on that, so that when we have that roundtable discussion with our elected leaders, that we'll make sure that we are advocating for our citizens here in Wayne County.
Mr. Chair, I know this is out of order, I hope that you'll indulge me on this, when you were talking about the community block grant.
Yes.
I saw Ms. Graham get very emotional, so I would like to ask if she could just come and just express how she feels.
Well, that's fine, if you'd like to come and make, in fact, if you would like to come and make some comments, that's fine, please do.
Thank you, sir.
I just want to say, thank y'all, thank y'all, thank y'all, I'm very emotional, because there's the email I sent out to each one of you, I lost my husband last year, I marched to leukemia, 49 years of marriage, and this is a task that, with me having to do the yard work now, going in the backyard, looking at that ditch that Mr. Gurley saw, Mr. Antonio, and I think you said somebody else went out with you, it's been a task, it's been a learning experience, and as I said, the back, my ditch became, is becoming a backyard, and the backyard has become a ditch, and when DOT told me that, I was getting water from my whole subdivision to one over, he said, you're getting water from three places behind your house, it goes behind my house and go out of Rolandwood, and they know what I'm talking about, you have to see it to actually know what I'm talking about, I guess, but I just thank God first, and then I did want to stand when you were talking earlier, but I just want to thank you all, thank everybody, thank you, thank you, thank you, because Rolandwood needs it, we need it, we need it for the future, we need it for now, 68 years old, and I don't want to move, I don't want to move, I want to stay there until I can't stay there anymore, so I just say, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you to God, and thank you again, and let's just, the ball is out there, keep it rolling, and help us, help us, help us, we really appreciate it in Rolandwood from the bottom of our hearts, because we're just a little subdivision, trying to make it, you know, best we can, and not no giant community, but just, you know, doing the best we can and trying to be good citizens, tight-spans citizens, and I know my family, my three kids, my husband, did the best we could always, so again, I say, thank you to everybody, all of you had a hand, I'm so appreciative.
And thank you, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Let me make one comment on that, we need to Luther at DOT and their hydrologists, they played a part in that as well, but, you know, but we're blessed to have David Harris, but, you know, the man over in the corner sits, so we don't say a whole lot, and he's, we're very blessed to have Chip, Chip is very intelligent, he's quiet a lot of times, but he's, he's been, he's been through a lot of jobs and knows a lot of stuff, and we are blessed to have him, because a lot of that grant, us getting grants, starts with him, and that's, and he doesn't get a lot of accolades, but I just want to acknowledge his expertise in that area too, so.
And with that said, we adjourn.